We'll call it over, Ben County Board Commissioners Meeting, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, let it be known that all commissioners are here.
Ooh.
I thought you'd like that.
Thanks.
Moving on, approve or amend the agenda. Monty, you have anything to add?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair. Under Roxanne Ackman, 905, if we could add a fourth item, discussion of the One Watershed, One Plan, I believe it's the Joint Powers Agreement, and Michelle will join us for that discussion. That'd be the fourth item under Roxanne Ackman, 905. And that's it.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agendas presented.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, for the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Passes. County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's chair's consent before adjusting the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved in the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off all your cell phones and/or put them on vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, is there anybody out there that would like to adjust the board at this time?
No, no.
That'll be during the public hearing.
That'll be during the public hearing for you guys. Nothing, Monty?
No, no one has signed up.
Thank you. Moving forward, we've got consent agenda items number one through seven. What would the Board like to do with that?
I'll move for approval for consent agenda items, no, one through seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Can't hear me very well? Got an echo, Monty, turn your hearing aids up.
Change the battery.
What was that?
What was that?
You gotta have a little fun.
Nevermind.
Go ahead, Sarah. We'll always listen to you speak. Okay, well, we're gonna move forward. Next item is Roxanne for Land Service Director. Conduct a public hearing to consider ordinance 484 to rezone 56 acres from the B1 Business District to B2 Business Enterprise District. Before we open the public hearing, we'll first listen to the staff report.
Okay, so I was hoping that the property owner, the applicant, would be in the audience. Oh, you are. My apologies. So I'm just gonna address this right up front. We did receive an email from Relia Stone requesting to continue this item so that they can gather more information. So I want to let the applicant come up and ask for that specifically.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm June Marie Frederick with Relia Stone. And as she said, we'd like postponement on this so we can gather more information for the conditions that you had a negative reaction to.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, or that's it?
That's it.
Roxanne?
Okay. So we, by statute, we have to, I have to have the County Board act on this within 60 days. And so, June, if you wouldn't mind waiving the 60-day requirement for the Board to act on this?
That would give you a longer time.
Otherwise, they must act on it within 60 days. So if you waive that requirement, they have longer to act on it, which is what you're ultimately requesting. Do you just want to tell them?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, please come to the podium again.
Okay, yes, I would waive that 60 days.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Roxanne?
And so it is actually, it's up to the County Board. You do have the right to deny that request of continuance and to act on the request, or you can table this and send it back to the Planning Commission if you'd so choose.
Okay. Right now, we'll open the public hearing. For anybody to speak on this, please state your name and address, please, sir.
At Greg Roosevelt, 11825 16th Avenue, Northwest Rice, Minnesota. I'm one of the supervisors for Langola. And basically, the day I just, you know, handed this out, showing you what was handed to the Planning Commission, and that's our concerns in Langola Township. What we're concerned about mainly, though, or personally, is that unless the highway changes, acceleration lanes and exit lanes, or whatever it is, and one of the other articles I gave you is that Highway 10 is one of the fifth most dangerous roads in the state, and it's getting worse every day. Anything added to that is, there's gonna be a potential injury or death. And that's our main concern. And right now, there's no acceleration lanes or anything, so I don't know how that facility could operate effectively with where the situation is, unless the MinDOT decides to do some changes there. And we're also concerned that they would try to use township roads to get to Rice. And Rice is the only safe place to exit north and south. And so that's our main concern. And I'd like to also remind the Board that the Planning Commission voted eight to zero not to approve the change in classification. So that'd be my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
You bet. Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
If I interrupt very quickly, if I, sorry, I wasn't sure which direction you were gonna go with this. I can give the full presentation. I just thought if you wanted to, okay.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, we could hear from Jim and then let Roxanne come back.
Yep, we'll let her finish her presentation.
I'm Jim Hough, at 160 North Freeman Road, Langola Township. I have a couple of concerns. Some of it echoes Greg's concerns. The access, particularly at 115th, is particularly bad. When I used to go to St. Cloud, wherever, I'd go down 116th and then turn onto Highway 10. Not safe. About the time to get done gauging traffic from one way, it's coming from the other way. And then about two days before a big weekend, don't even try. You end up going to Rice. That being said, going down 16th with heavy traffic, if the township were to have that happen, it'd probably require an overlay. I'm not excited about paying for additional highway road maintenance on our township road, which is pretty heavily traveled right now, just to accommodate other traffic. And not only that, to mention, it's a residential road. Kids are on the road. Commercial traffic is not anything that gets me terribly excited. MinDOT, I don't believe, will ever make access to Highway 10 other than their cloverleafed areas doable. They're in the process of closing those down. So instead of increasing traffic to Highway 10 from a side road, I'm quite convinced that's not gonna happen, and it's gonna get eliminated even farther. And I just hope the County Board would take into consideration the serious safety effects of no matter how they exit, whether they exit on 115th or down by the gas station, it's not gonna be a pretty picture. It's just very difficult to get not onto Highway 10, but crossing, going to the eastbound or southbound traffic. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Roxanne, we'll let you finish.
Do you want a presentation? I can certainly.
Mr. Chair, I think it'd be good for us to hear.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Give me a second here. Okay. So the property in question is 56 acres in Watap Township. You can see that here. It's along Highway 10. And directly to the north, here's 115th Street Northwest. Straight to the north is Langola Township. So this is that border of Langol and Watap. And then to the east, you've got Rockwood Estates. As far as zoning, that area currently zoned B1. To the north, we've got B1. To the south, we've got B1. And then ag across the highway on, across Highway 10. And then residential, we've got R1, everything to the east. To the north, it does state ag, but those are 10-acre lots that are, that have homes on them. They're not being used for ag purposes. So it is surrounded quite completely by residential uses. Let me just hide this so we can see a little bit better. Here's our comp plan and the land use planning framework. As you can see, along Highway 10 here, that red is highway commercial. And if we go into our definitions of what that means, some of our, excuse me, while I look for what we have that. So our highway commercial is an area that is more for compact-type development, serving the traveling public and nearby properties. Not so much for these larger uses that aren't for the public to stop at. The difference between our B1 and B2 is sort of those heavier-type uses. We've got fertilizer plant, repair garage, recycling center, and transfer station are the big items that are different in our B2 versus our B1. B1 is a little less of an intense use, or B2 has the potential for some of these more intense uses.
Roxanne, if I could, excuse me, interrupt you there. If you could maybe let the Board know the B2 differences also on what would require a CUP, or what's by right?
Sure, certainly.
Just some examples so that they kind of have an idea of.
Let me go to that B2. So within our B2, feed storage, fertilizer plant, repair garage, garden stores, those are permitted by right. They would not go to the Planning Commission. Conditional uses, recycling center, transfer station, private solar gardens, those are all items that would be required to go to the Planning Commission before approval. Other things, light manufacturing is in there. That may be in our B1 as well. I marked off in your packets, the ones that are marked off are the ones that are allowed in a B2, whether permitted or with a conditional use. So those are the major differences. There are some more intense uses, depending on what you're looking at. But with the conditional use in the B1, that still does give the Planning Commission some oversight to make sure that it's appropriate for that, for that particular area and matches our comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
I did drive down here. So this, this is on 115th Street Northwest, facing east. To the right is the Relia Stone property. Those trees are in place currently. This was maybe a week and a half ago, excuse me. Here is 15th Avenue Northwest, facing south. Rockwood Estates is on the left, and then Relia Stone is on the right. And again, those trees are standing. I am going the wrong way here. Here is facing north, we've got Rockwood Estates on the right. And then this property back here where the billboard is, is Relia Stone. And this is on Highway 10 going northbound, and you can see the trees that are still standing today. Here is part of the operation where they're removing trees. And then we get into items to consider when reviewing a rezoning request. Just making sure that it is not a spot zoning, so we're not rezoning an area that is surrounded by uses that are not compatible, and that it's not a small area rezoned for a single use. Any questions from me?
Sorry, I jumped the gun. I should've let you do this presentation first.
Oh, that's okay. I wasn't sure if you were going to move to table it before getting into this, so.
The public hearing is still open. Is there anybody else out there in the audience?
Anybody online?
Mr. Chair, Roxanne, I believe you also received an email update from Julie Johnson from Watap.
That'll be next.
Are you reading that in from the township?
That'll be next. You'll have to read that in.
Okay.
Anybody else? Public hearing.
Gordon Nagle from 16th Avenue, Northwest Rice. My opinion is the speed too is, I don't care for fertilizer plants and all this other garbage, you know, recycling, whatever. I'm only a half mile away, and I don't like to see that. I've been there too many years to see all that going. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? At this point in time, I'll close the public hearing. Okay. Roxanne, is there any emails, letters, or other communications right into the record?
We received the email from Julie Johnson with Watap Township, voicing their support of the project and with a continuation or tabling of the request.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, and I'm sorry to put this on you, Roxanne, but I guess I would like to have you read that right into the record. I think it's important for the record and for the public to hear Watap's stance on this. This is information that was not presented at the Planning Commission.
Absolutely. Hello Benton County Board and Staff. I would like to give you an update from the Watap Board as to what we discussed at our last meeting on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, concerning the rezoning request of Relia Stone. My email did not get sent properly, so it missed the planning and zoning meeting. The Board voted to approve the request to rezone B2 with no conditions. In our road discussion portion of the meeting, we discussed the condition of 105th Street Northwest, I believe she means 115th, and 15th Avenue Northwest, both Watap Township roads. Watap Township shares this road with Langola Township. However, Watap maintains the entire portion of 105th, again, 115th, Street Northwest, west of Little Rock Lake. Langola maintains 105th, 115th, east of the lake. Watap Township has many businesses, residential neighborhoods located within the Highway 10 corridor, and their only access is Highway 10. While it can be difficult to get off and onto the highway on Fridays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., all the other times, they are able to navigate traffic successfully. Issues of trucks and trailers onto and off of Highway 10 is not a concern of ours. A list of these businesses include Saldana Concrete, heavy trucks, conveyors, pump trucks, Saldana Excavating, heavy trucks and trailers, Kay Johnson Construction, trucks, trailers, and a conveyor, Oak Hill Golf Course Residence, west side of 85th Street Northwest Residence, is it, Poyer Trucking?
Poyer Trucking.
Poyer Trucking, Performance Foods, Rice, Minnesota, Ardeo Equipment, heavy equipment trucks and trailers, Unique Movers Trucks and Trailers, Swilling Tree Service Trucks and Trailers. As to our concerns of 105th, 115th, and 15th Avenue Northwest, both of these roads are in poor condition and are part of our ongoing discussion for rebuilding. 105th, 115th particularly had a bad winter and is in disrepair. When the township rebuilds roads, we are building them to a nine-ton specification. After I had discussions with Jeff and Tom Friedrich last week, I sent them, I sent an email to MinDOT St. Cloud and asked for their guidance for the exit and entrance off of Highway 10. I also asked if it was possible to change the angle of the 105th, 115th entrance to a 45-degree angle from its current approximate 35-degree angle for greater safety access. I'm waiting for the response, and will send it to you when I receive it. I hope you will consider tabling the vote on the rezoning at the Board meeting and ask that the Board send it back to the Planning and zoning to allow the Friedrichs the chance to address the Board's concerns. I was unable to attend last week and would have rearranged my schedule had it been known that traffic was such a concern for this large commercial parcel and a part of the zoning process. Sincerely, Julie Johnson, Watap Township Supervisor.
Thank you. Has the department received any comments or concerns from the state agencies, cities, or townships on this agenda?
Just the one from Watap. And Langol has been here to represent. They have not contacted me directly.
Okay. Has there any official action was required by an affected township?
No.
Nothing? Okay. The County Board will now have time for questions to staff and discussion. And as a reminder to the audience, the public hearing portion is closed. Are there any questions or comments from Board members before we take action on this agenda item? Commissioner Pop?
Well, there are several things that came out of the Planning Commission. One is that I thought the Planning Commission vented this really well. I mean, I was kind of impressed at members that made comments that don't live in the area or just travel onto 115th Street. And they talked about using 116th Avenue and Langola. There's 16 families that live on, on that part, that road. And Langol has got a huge concern with that, that they would do that. And then I, I'm not, you know, I want to see the development of property and economic development in the county move forward. So I think we need to do everything we can to make this a safe deal. When Julie Johnson's letter reflected the part of other businesses that come onto Highway 10, that's not totally what we heard a few years ago when we were rebuilding 55 in that county. Poyer Trucking, Saldana Excavating, Saldana Concrete, all go to Rice to get onto the highway. If Poyer Trucking has to go across the highway and go north, they pick a lot of mail up in the Buckman area, they never try to get on the highway there. They always go to Rice and get on the exit to get on there. So that's not totally 100%. And they all came before us that, well, let's see, Steve was there. They all showed up at Rice that day when we had our road tour in Rice about how this is needed because you can't get on the highway. So that part kind of is not what we've heard in the past, that we move forward. And I want to give Relia Stone every benefit of the doubt that they can come up with a plan or something. I don't know what kind of plan, or where they can go with a plan. You know, it looks like it's pretty cut and dried, whether Watap or, you know, the exit at the Pine's Edge grocery there and the trailer court. There's a lot of people living in that addition. There's a huge amount of traffic there. Maybe MinDOT's willing to do something, we don't know, but somebody's gonna have to contact them and go that route. So as long as it has to go before the Planning Commission was my first, before it comes back to us. And the other part is, if we held up the Planning Commission's actions of last Thursday, do Relia Stone have a chance to come back and ask for reclassification again?
You, as the Board, can send it back to the Planning Commission to be reconsidered as part of this process.
No, but I meant if we, if we held up their decision. I don't like to go against Planning Commission. That was eight people that vented this really well that Thursday night. They, everyone, I think, on that board, but maybe our newbie, had questions about this. And if we start saying, you know, man, we don't like your decision, would you reconsider it? I mean, we went this route once before. But if, if we upheld what the Planning Commission did, does Relia Stone have the opportunity to ask you to send it before Planning Commission again?
So they could bring it back in one year.
Okay.
Or if they want to bring it back, they can bring it back sooner than that, as long as they prove that they have new evidence.
Okay. I guess that's, that's all that I have. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pinsky.
From my standpoint, I am huge in development, any economic development out there. And I don't want to go against the, the Planning Commission either. They put in a lot of time on this, and they definitely know what's going on. However, I don't think it's going against the Planning Commission if we allow them to take another look at it, especially if there might be some additional information that comes forward. So I would be, I would be in support of, of having, having this turned back and having another look in light of potential new information.
I, too, would not go against the Planning Commission. I did it once in my previous position, and we've got two commissioners up here that were on opposite sides. It's not a good issue. It's not a good thing, and it takes a long time. We put, we all put people on this board from our district. Well, some of us have, so far, you know. So we also have to make sure that they understand everything. But in light of the information of what Julie Johnson just presented, that she already contacted, you know, MinDOT, I don't think that'll change. But I am also looking for development. And, and I think it would be a good idea just to table it, you know, trying to get more information, have the applicant get more information. Commissioner Johnson?
I think from my perspective, as being on the Planning Commission, I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, but I believe the Planning Commission's concerns would still sit, with one exception, that this was information that was not presented to them.
Yep.
If I recall correctly, there was a commissioner here from Watap, and basically, the short answer was, they support it. I don't believe he got into any other. I don't believe he got into any other discussion about why. I, I believe he just stood up and said Watab supports this. This information that Julie Johnson presented, to my recollection, was not shared at that meeting, and I think that's something that the planning commission would appreciate seeing. I don't know that it would change their mind, but they may go down the road of tabling versus denying because of it. So again, I'm not going to speak for the planning commission, but I can tell you that I would have liked to have seen this information. I realize we didn't for reasons that were out of our control, but I think it's important information from, especially from the township that's one of them directly involved. It's not like it's coming from Maywood or Glendareto or somebody like that, so. I, I too, I guess I would agree that, I appreciate that the board doesn't want to overrule the planning commission, but I don't know that you're overruling them by sending it back, and I think Commissioner Kapinski stated that correctly, is that, hey, we've got some more information, take a look at it again, what are, and their choices again are approval, denial, or they could table it before it comes back to this board. So what I think, and I just want to make one other comment, and again, this is kind of to the public and the people who've spoken during the public hearing, is that we all have to remember one thing, that the planning commission was looking only at the rezoning request.
Yep.
This is not about what they think might go in there, what they know might go in there. That can all change before the application actually comes in front of the planning commission. So we all have to be careful about recognizing that. If I've been told that once, I've been told it 100 times by our county attorney and Roxanne, that we're dealing with the application in front of us. So we have to be careful and put that other stuff kind of aside, and we're looking at only the rezoning request. And I think this is good information that the planning commission should probably see, and I think too that it would maybe be appropriate to table, send it back to them.
Mr. Chair?
One more thing is that if we table and send it back, I guess I look at the other township that's directly involved too in this. That would give them more time to see what their options are to prohibit the use of 16th Street. I mean, they spent a lot of money, like Mr. Hovde said, on getting their roads up to par, and if this is a heavy traffic truck road, they need to see what they can do if they have any authority at all.
Mr. Chair, I would also share, and my own concern is I, the concern I have of two townships that have polarizing concerns here, right? And so I, I think it'd be nice to let them work through that, some of that, because this is probably not the first or the last time they're gonna have to deal with that. One question, maybe Greg could answer for me here, Roxanne. 115th is the township line. Who's paying for the rebuild of that? Do you split it? How does that work?
No.
The way it works is we signed an agreement years ago that on the east side of Little Rock Lake, Watab takes care of that road, and we take care on the other side.
Okay.
And I had 100% expense.
So in this case, on the west side of 115th, Watab would pay for total reconstruction of that, if that's what they chose to do?
Well, they'd have, they'd have to pay for the, the part we're, we're looking at.
Yes.
We've put hundreds of thousands of dollars in on the other side of the lake already the last couple of years.
Sure.
And if you look at 115th Street on that east side, which is by Highway 10, it's totally dilapidated. I mean, it's falling apart.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion to table this and send it back to the planning commission for reconsideration.
Second.
Do we want to put a date?
A date for the planning commission?
To have it reverted at the planning commission.
Mr. Chair, I would.
I'm not, I, I, it's hard when there's kind of that no end date to come back, because we don't, we would not reissue a public notice, and so at, at least if we put a date on it, you can table it again if you choose, or you could act on it, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't republish.
Would it be appropriate then just to send it back to planning commission, let them determine a date? Because they're gonna make three, one of three decisions.
Yep.
And if they decide to table, they're gonna put a date on it.
Sure.
And then that date comes up and that comes back to this board for action.
So that would move it into June anyway then, right?
By the county board, yes. So the next planning commission would be May 26th, and then the county board after.
And just, just, just clarification, when it comes back here, it would not, there would not be another public hearing, is that correct? It'd just be board consideration and action?
Michelle, can you answer that?
I know the, the board did close the public hearing.
They could reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
So if they wish to do that, would they need to announce the date, time, and place today? Otherwise, then you would have to republish, wouldn't you?
I don't believe.
So what I would recommend is setting it for the next planning commission, having it go back to the very next planning commission meeting.
Okay. So Michelle, then, would, would the county board need to announce a date, time, and place if it's, if it's subsequent public hearing today? Or if we didn't, would we need to republish that?
I would recommend setting it to, so it's the next planning commission meeting, the 29th or 26th of May?
Yes.
I would set that to be considered by the planning commission on that date, and then have the next board meeting, the public hearing for, the hearing for this.
June 7th, June 7th.
And if we have to change things, then we can.
Okay, Michelle, just so I'm clear, so if we send it back to planning commission on May 26th, they choose one of three ways to go. If they choose to table, then when it comes back to this board, the following meeting, that's gonna get extended again, because they've tabled it.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear. All right, so I'll amend the motion, Mr. Chair, to send this back to the planning commission for their next meeting on May 26th.
Okay, and I will also amend my second to that.
Okay.
Commissioner Pop?
So I think that's fine, we send it back, but in my looks at this, if the applicant doesn't furnish any new information, I don't see anything changing. And does that give the applicant enough time to furnish different information in order to make it go forward?
I guess the planning commission will have to determine that.
They could also table that at that time again.
That is correct, yep. Any further discussion on this? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this will be tabled for the next planning commission meeting. Next, consider a resolution amending, terminating, and dissolving the St. Cloud area joint planning district.
Okay. So I recently received an email from Matt Glazeman with the City of St. Cloud and Stearns County, bringing up the, there's a joint planning district board that's out there that is, that was established back in, I think it was earlier than 2000, but I believe in 2000 maybe when Benton County got involved. And so what this was is, it was established based on 1997 Community-Based Planning Act, and it brought together all of these communities, the city of St. Cloud, Sauk Rapids, Sartell, St. Joe, Wake Park, and then the counties of Sherburne, Benton, and Stearns. And everybody would, was brought to the table to discuss community planning, develop these comprehensive plans. And so with that, because it was a joint planning board, there was insurance coverage that was required as part of that, and we've been paying into that about $1,000 annually. This board has not met since maybe 2015, at least that was the last discussion about dissolving this board. And so it, it's come up, and there is a desire by all parties to amend it, to allow for each board to terminate and dissolve the joint planning district. I did receive, so far, Wake Park, Sauk Rapids, Stearns County, and the city of Sartell have all adopted this resolution to terminate the joint planning district board. With that, because there is some funds left over in the account, we would end up receiving about $1,240 back as part of this agreement, the dissolving of this agreement.
Questions?
Nope, Mr. Chair, I don't, they haven't met since 2015, and I move forward that we support this.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, one question just for the public. What is the area of this joint planning district? What would this cover?
As far as material or?
Like territory.
Territory, yeah.
All of Stearns, Benton, and Sherburne County.
Okay.
Cities were a party to it as well.
Okay, any, any further discussion on this item? Now to call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, land service update on Eagleview Commons.
Okay. Well, so I've been working with the PCA and drafting the ordinance to begin this septic loan program. Through that, I've discovered that there, there really is no way for the county to move forward with this without 100% approval from all property owners. It is a loan program, and so I, I'm continuing on with the ordinance to, to get that into place, but we will need 100% of all property owners to approve and apply, well, apply for and approve for this loan to be a lien on their property. I'm in the process of drafting this agreement and getting it out to the homeowners association. I have notified Corey Free, the president of the HOA, and he said he is gonna work diligently to get that, that approval from all property owners. We, we actually have, the application has been approved by the PCA, so we, I mean, we're, we're still on that road, but it may be a while until we get approval from all of the property owners. And so at that, I, I've let Monty know that there's no need to discuss the GO note until we know that this is in fact a go.
Mr. Chair, Roxanne, is that just a simple signature signing off, or is it a whole legal process they need to go through?
Uh, so I'm, I'm still working on the application. I have not gotten that to Michelle yet. It, it, there will be some legal language in there binding them to that commitment.
Okay.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Mr. Chair, you can see a little bit of frustration on mine, and it's not with you, it's not with your department, it's not with anybody from the county, but this is an eyesore, this is, you know, this is dangerous out there, it's a first thing.
Yeah, we're talking, we're still on Eagle stairs.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
We're still on Eagleview Commons, but that's all right.
This is not an eyesore out there, man, you're gonna get in trouble with those people.
I, I wouldn't move right to King's.
I have better news about that one.
Oh, good.
Seems like all the commissioners are jumping ahead.
My comment on this is we, we heard from them people and we have to move forward, but I think we heard the day they were here that they have a couple people that are probably not in favor of this, but there's no out for them. I mean, they're gonna have to work on, on the naysayers to get them to sign up, because there's no alternative plan, people.
There is not, that is correct.
And they do have the ability as an HOA to get their own financing and assess it back, even if they don't have everybody in agreement.
So they could use that on?
They could.
They could, yeah.
And this looks like a lot better idea program than what they're gonna end up with, so.
And, and that'll be on them to explain it to the residents of that development.
That's good. Probably the big advantage of this program is advantageous interest rate. Yeah, right.
That's right.
Which is money in your pocket if you.
Yeah.
Now we can go to the.
Anymore, okay, let's, let's go to the King's End.
We have an agreement signed back by the property owner, Mr. Renalo. He has agreed to up to $70,000 in, in fees to assess it back, one payment, 3%. So we have that. I plan to bring that to the county board on May 3rd, and then Michelle and I are working on the contract with the contractor to get them, make sure that they agree to do what they're supposed to do, provide us with a performance bond and everything, and I hope to bring that on May 3rd as well. And then I'm still waiting on a start date from them, assuming that everything's approved on May 3rd, so they, I should have that information to you by that meeting, but we're making progress.
All right. Commissioner Kapinski.
I do apologize, and I thank you for your update. Very good job.
And leave it at that.
Anything else?
No, it's just, it's been frustrating. Every time I drive by there, it's just, it doesn't look good.
We, we've all been getting phone calls about this too, so at least this is good, good information we can share.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's move forward, local board of appeals and equalization.
I just want to let you all know that they went very well. There was a few upset people, but I think that's to be expected, but overall, given the increase in market value, I think these went extremely well. I did attend a couple of them and received very good comments back from those boards on our new assessors, the job that he's doing and that entire office.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
I did, I did attend the one in there, and yeah, handles himself very well, and it was well-received. And we did have one that was, you know, pretty, they were, they were more concerned about the township, didn't give him enough slotted time to state his case than it was about our assessor, and I think they, I, we just talked to, what's her name, Maria, and they went out and took care of that right after the meeting, so. Back to the good old days when former Brian Castor Assessor was there.
Maybe it's the name.
It has to be.
Maybe it is. Great, anything else on that?
No, not on that.
Okay, let's do the number one, the Watershed Plan.
I'll turn it straight over to Michelle, and Jerry's here as well.
Seen that.
Just so you know, Michelle.
Perfect. I just wanted to kind of update you, we've been getting some feedback from some of the attorneys and apparently the other entities are having some discussions, so I wanted to put it in front of you for just some feedback regarding the structure and how we move forward with this. Of course, the best option is still the JPE, that offers the best protection, it's the cleanest, and if we can get everyone on board, I think that's absolutely the way to go. Now, one of the other entities have offered to be the fiscal agent besides Benton Sewal Water Conservation District. However, they would want absolute final decision-making, which I absolutely agree with, if they are taking on the additional liability and responsibility, then they should take recommendations from the policy committee, but still be able to act with their own authority. And there are some concerns with that particular group taking over from my other client, so the other option would be that Benton Sewal Water Conservation District would remain the fiscal agent under an MOA structure, and they would have the final say. So those are kind of the three options, or, excuse me, there's a fourth option, it fails. So just looking for some feedback, and maybe Jerry Machi could speak to them maybe maintaining fiscal agency.
Jerry, you have anything to discuss, talk about?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. We, we haven't had a meeting as an SWCD since this new information from Michelle has come out, so I just talked to our Sewal Water District Board members individually just to kind of clue them in on what's going on. We certainly don't want to have a serial meeting, you know, without, had an official meeting to discuss the matter, so. You know, I think I would say our board's a little bit, more than a little bit frustrated that we feel like some of the other entities that want to continue down the MOU route have been given the opportunity then to become the fiscal agent if they so choose, you know, to continue down that route, and they're not stepping up to the plate, and we sort of feel like we're, I guess, being forced into this liability and decision, I would say liability and the, and the decision-making process, you know, that we would need to take if we're gonna accept the liability solely, so. I do have, I don't know if I would call it a split board, but I've got a couple board members that are saying, no, let's go, let's continue down the JPE path, and not let the rest of the policy committee and the other SWCDs and counties sort of force the, you know, force Benton into, into this position, and a couple others that are, are saying, well, let's continue down the MO, let's go down the MOU route, with the understanding that it would need to have all the requirements that our attorney would, would recommend, you know, putting into the actual document itself, so. You know, a little bit concerned about, for example, hiring the consultant, so the situation where the policy committee would come in and do the interviews and make a recommendation on the consultant, do we then as an SWCD also do interviews? Or do we just, just accept the, the recommendations? Or do we, um, just, just accept the, the recommendations of the policy committee? It's a little bit, um, when you're liable for that decision, it's, you know, a little bit of an odd situation that, uh, I don't feel real comfortable with, so. Um, by the, last thing I would say is, when I talk to all my board members, you know, we're very aware that the water plan is a county plan. It's a county plan. It allows you to get natural resources block grant, a lot of your grants, and opens a lot of opportunities. And we administer it, uh, the agreement that was made many, many, many years ago. We administrate that on your behalf, so. We do want to stay in line with whatever the county board, um, direction the county board chooses to go. You know, the JPE route versus MOU. We, uh, it's important to us that, you know, representing you that we, you know, continue down the same path.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I could comment. Michelle or Jerry, please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding has been, my short time on this, that our county attorney's office has highly recommended the JPE, and that Benton County is the fiscal agent. Now, one of my times that I attended the policy committee meeting is, we've got a policy committee here that sits around for two, three hours, hammering each other about JPE versus MOU, when really, that final decision will go to each county board. Is that correct? I mean, Stern, Sherburne, and Benton County Boards will have to make the decision based probably upon their county attorney's recommendations. So, we've got the policy committee hammering on each other about how they're gonna do it, when realistically, they're not the ones deciding. So, from my viewpoint, I mean, we've had the recommendation from our county attorney's office to stick with the JPE if we're gonna be the fiscal agent. And I think that's what we all, during a cow, came to consensus with, right?
Yep.
So, I think the policy committee needs to understand somehow or another that they're not the one making that decision. And they're spending a lot of time going back and forth about how this is gonna work, when it's not their decision. So, I don't know, Michelle, if you're able to share with us what the other county attorney's offices are, are recommending to their county boards. Not the SWCDs or the policy committee, the county boards and the county attorney's office. What's that discussion?
Well, I will preface the fact that we each have two clients in the room. We have Solwater, as well as the county.
Sure.
So, two separate entities, they're counseling both, just like I'm counseling both my clients. And it would be Benton-Solwater Conservation District, that would be the fiscal agent, so they're the ones with the greater liability, um, and not the county, fortunately. But, uh, what I'm hearing is that they're offering the option of the JPE, but the clients are not necessarily getting on board. So, like I said, we did, one of the other entities, Sherburne-Solwater Conservation District, did offer to be the fiscal agent under an MOU situation. Um, but they would get that final say. But there are some concerns due to past relationships with their fiscal responsibility. So, that is another option.
I, I can tell you...
And the liability will be less for you guys.
I can tell you, from my little bit of experience on the policy committee and what I've seen, Benton should maintain their position on a JPE. Let Soil and Water be the fiscal agent.
Mr. Chair, so, in the Rum River One Water One Plan, we went down this route, whether it was a joint collaborative or a joint entity, and, and eventually all agreed on an entity. And, I mean, I don't know why, you know, and Sherburne was part of that, so I don't know why they produce, you know, would change now. The other part is that, from past experience, if the Soil and Water Board in Sherburne County wants to go one route, the county board will go the same route. That's just a given, the way it's been for about three, four years, correct, Jerry? They, they don't vent it, yeah, they don't vent it. They just take the recommendations from their Soil and Water Board.
Well, if that's the case, and I think we're gonna have a battle for a while if this board should stay in the JPE.
That's what I would say, yeah.
Well, so, what I would also specify is that there's two different phases here. There is the planning phase, which we are currently discussing in the same cloud Mississippi One Watershed One Plan. And then, there is the implementation. And, that will come down the road. I think there will be much more support for the joint powers entity as a part of that implementation, um, because there will be more decisions that need to be made regarding projects, whereas this is just coming up with that water plan. Which is the argument I keep hearing from my other colleagues and, uh, their clients, is that, you know, really, this is just planning, it's one contract, maybe two. Um, but I will tell you that the Rum River was just an MOU, and they did have some difficulties, and that is ultimately why their attorney recommended a JPE. But, they decided to, um, instead offer up their services and go the route of the MOU. And they're not trying to take the fiscal responsibility from Benton-Solwater Conservation District. What I'm gathering is, they just want this project to move forward, and they would fall on the sword, um, to report this planning process.
With the final say.
Yeah, I, I mean, for me, it's, it's kind of a simple thing of, in this particular case, we've had a direct recommendation from our county attorney's office on how to handle this. I, I must go speak for all of you, but I, I don't have experience with that, right? And so, we're reaching out to the people who do, to give us a recommendation. And I, I haven't seen any other reason why we should move from that. Just because one of these other counties' SWCD offices or part of their policy committee that's put together are crying over they want to have an MOU. There, it's not their final decision. It's their county board's decision. And if Sherburne's gonna go along with their SWCD, so be it.
But, correct me, Michelle, but I think all, all entities have a vote in this in the end, right? I mean, so, yeah.
So, every party to the agreement would have to agree to the structure.
Right.
So, every Solwater Conservation District, every county in the Clearwater River Watershed District would also have to agree to the structure.
But, well, but from what I'm hearing is, this board still is looking at the JPE.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Michelle, are you rec, uh, maybe you can't tell me this, and maybe I've missed it. Are you recommending the JPE to both your clients?
Yes.
Okay.
And specifically for the purpose of the fact that SWCD would be the fiscal agent. That is really where my concern lies, because they would have additional responsibility, um, if it's just an MOU. So, it wouldn't be split equally amongst the parties if it's not a JPE.
And...
Who'd be taking on the line, sure.
And Jerry, part of your board is split on the MOU versus JP, even with the attorney, your, your representation?
Well, like I said, we haven't meant to discuss this. I just, there's a lot of, they're, they're frustrated.
Yeah.
Certainly, and I think maybe I heard a lot of frustration in the, my phone calls to them all, to let them know that, from what I'm hearing from staff and, uh, others, that most of the attorneys and, and MCIT is recommending the JPE route, and, um, they're going the, uh, different direction, and so. You know, I think, uh, our SWCD wants this process to move forward. You heard from Jason Winerman at our lunch, there's, there is a fair amount of funding at stake. You know, I ca, I keep, I do hear guaranteed funding. Everything's up to the legislature every two years, you know, but I think the, for me, it's reliability and funding, so, you know, we do want to keep the process moving. And I think that's kind of what a couple of my board members are saying, is, you know, we don't want this to fail, but...
Mr. Chair, and I just want to echo one thing you said that we, we didn't say, or I didn't say, is it's not just Michelle, it's MCIT.
Mm-hmm.
Also, I would have to assume, and this is assumption, Michelle, the other counties are getting that recommendation from MCIT, are they not? I mean, you wouldn't think MCIT is gonna tell the other counties to do something different.
Correct. So, MCIT, um, was the one that recommended, you know, clearly it's cleaner, um, but ultimately can't give legal advice. Each county attorney has to provide that advice to their individual clients. I did speak with Ann Gearing as well, who's also been dealing with other One Watershed One plans, and of course, she is gung ho on JPEs, um, for all the reasons that we've stated. Um, yeah, and just to let you know, our attorney meeting is not until tomorrow. So, we haven't had any formal discussions to formally hear what all of their clients have decided. I'm just hearing this third hand through other attorneys. So, I thought I would give you this heads up, kind of feel you out. No formal decisions need to be made, but it sounds like we still kind of want to go in that direction of really pushing for that JPE.
That's mine. That's my view.
Yeah, and Commissioner Heinand and Commissioner Johnson, there's a possibility that we move forward with the JPE and the policy committee doesn't come up with a recommendation. Or recommends one day, one way or another. But, it does even ultimately go back to the individual SWCDs, counties, and the watershed district. And it's possible at the policy committee, we, we have a split, you know, we don't have a unanimous decision or something. It doesn't mean that it can't go to the, the individual boards for consideration, so.
Good. Anything else? Because we don't have to act on this, so.
Nope.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Jerry.
Alright, we'll get through it. Promise.
Great. Next, Sheriff Trihack, approve pro, proclamation, yeah.
Proclamation.
Yep, for National Correctional Officers Week in Benton County. Ah, Sheriff, please.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for the time this morning. As, uh, Chair mentioned, I'm here seeking the board's support to designate week of May 1st to May 7th as National Correctional Officers Week. When most people think of public safety and law enforcement, their thoughts automatically go to, uh, a uniformed officer all driving up a patrol car and, and taking care of public safety needs on their block. And that's, that, that's natural, because that's the most visible link in the chain of public safety. However, that doesn't, uh, tell the full picture, because there are several other links in this chain of public safety that make possible what we do each day for the citizens of Benton County and everywhere in this nation. The last meeting, uh, my staff was before you talking about the job that, uh, the members of our PSAP committee do, or, I'm sorry, members of our PSAP do. And today, I'm here to talk to you about the work that our correctional officers do, our detention officers in our jail. With, without the work that these men and women do in our jail every day, we would have a very difficult time keeping safe the streets of Benton County. The judicial system places into our custody folks who have, by their behavior, proven they need to be separated from the rest of society for at least a period of time. And, somebody has to do the job of making sure that they are kept securely within a facility, that we make sure they're kept healthy and safe, and that all of our employees are kept healthy and safe. And that are, that's the three basic main functions that our correctional officers serve. And it's, it's not, uh, it's not a job for the faint of heart. It's a very difficult job to be in a facility for eight to 12 hours with some very difficult people that have some very challenging personalities sometimes. And to deal with situations a, and manage folks who don't want to be there. The work that these folks do as detention officers is truly remarkable. Um, they, they deal with very difficult people. They deal with mental illness more and more frequently. Um, we've talked several times, uh, I've talked from this podium about the challenges we see in our jail from mental illness and the, uh, the failure of the state to adequately address the problem that's out there. And unfortunately, it gets dumped onto our doorstep, and, uh, we have to have staff trained to do that. And they do a remarkable job of managing these folks as best we can. So, as a small token of our appreciation for the work that they do every day, each year, the first week of May is designated as National Correctional Officers Week to honor the work that these folks do in our facilities every day, all Benton County and the state of Minnesota and all across this nation. So, I am here asking that the board recognize the fine work that these detention officers do for the safety of the people of Benton County and all across the nation, and, uh, approve this proclamation.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I thank you guys for your support. As you know, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of all law enforcement, and that includes every rank and position across. So, I will make a motion to declare, uh, the week of May 1st through May 7th, uh, National Correctional Officer Week.
Second, go ahead.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next, Nadine, Utterer Treasurer. Approve a resolution granting permission to the Utterer Treasurer's office to purchase 24 Omni Ballot Tablet Assistive Voting Devices to ensure continued compliance with both federal and state laws with regard to polling place accessibility for individuals with disabilities. Anybody out there from the Utterer Treasurer's office?
I thought I just seen her on there. Out right there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so, we are here revisiting our previous conversation that we had two weeks ago regarding the state election grant, VEGA number three, that was awarded to Benton County to be used for replacing aging election equipment. The county received just over $37,000. So, as I previously stated, a couple of weeks ago, there was some mention about, um, you know, being able to budget for this for election equipment. Um, and in this particular situation, um, we did the budgets last fall. We didn't know that this money was coming forward. Um, we just received notification of the funding in March. So, it would have been difficult to put anything in the budget, um, not even knowing that we had money coming, and also, we would have had no indication of what money was coming. So, um, with that said, um, I would also like to mention, um, to the board that, um, and I did dig this out because I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of it. And Commissioner Heinand has already seen this. Um, this is a request I need to the board for the 2020 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, and my request, at that time, was that the board consider proactively putting funds aside for future election needs. Um, at that time, the board elected not to, um, start, um, implementing that budget policy request. But I did come to you a couple years ago. Had we put this in motion, if the board had put this in motion, um, we would actually have about $50,000 sitting in there today that we could have utilized, um, for the purchase of the assistive voting devices. So, we have replaced all of the election equipment, but the one piece, and we discussed this prior, uh, the assisted voting devices are 16 years old. Um, it would be, um, in the best interest of the county to consider, um, you know, replacing, replacing them sooner than later. So, um, we, we went through the numbers last time. We need about $102,000 to replace those devices. We have 37 from the state. Um, similar to the, uh, other, the VEGA number three, or, I'm sorry, the VEGA Grant Number One and Number Two, um, there is a match required. So, whatever the board elects to use of the 37,000, um, they will have to match that in order to utilize those funds. Um, so, um, I would just like to say, um, if you guys could just for a moment put everything else aside, this isn't about me. This is about the Benton County elections. This is about the election clerks having, um, newer voting equipment that's easier for them to transport, um, is, uh, speedier and, um, more efficient for them. This is also about the constituents, um, having that equipment available. Um, that is, um, this new equipment would be faster, um, and easier for your constituents who are disabled to utilize. Um, the other, uh, equipment that we have, um, at some point in time, we are not going to be able to get parts for that equipment. They will not be able to be serviced. So, um, there's electronic components in that, um, device that we currently have. It is, technology-wise, it is very outdated. They are very slow, um, to, uh, use when a voter is using them. The touchscreens are, um, temperamental. Um, so, I know that you had made some comments prior about this not being budgeted, and if I had known that we were gonna get this money, I most certainly would have talked to the board about budgeting some money for this. Is there any questions about the grant, what the board would like to do? I do need to report back to the state by the end of the month. If we're not going to utilize the funds, we, we need to send it back to the state.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Mr. Chair, Nadine, I'm not exactly sure on some of the comments here, but I'm 100% in favor of trying to utilize these funds. I'm, I'm big in technology, and I know that technology gets outdated. And we just got to figure out where we're going to come from. I think, Monty, you checked around, and some places or some counties utilize matching funds from cities and townships and everything like that? It doesn't always fall on just the county side?
Yeah, I contacted Randy Schreifels over in Stearns, and he, he let me know that they asked their cities and their townships to pay the cost of the assisted voting devices, net of any grants that they got. And he said they gave them kind of like easy payment plan over 10 years to repay that cost. And visited in Isanti County, and their practice, a long-term practice, has been to ask cities and counties to pay half the cost of voting equipment. So, it just, kind of a random sample of, of two counties that I, I think I, I, I visited Isanti because I, I noticed on the state, Secretary of State website that they use the Omni Ballot product. So, I want to, you know, see it in person and see how it worked and how big it was and stuff like that, so.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, Monty and Commissioner Kapinski, I assume though you're talking, I'm not opposed to using the dollars for that, but in these particular situations, the cities and townships probably knew ahead of time.
Right.
That they were going to do that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because we don't have, we have a timing issue here that if we choose to do this, it's going to be hard to go back to the townships and cities and say, by the way, could you pony up?
Mr. Johnson, you're probably right, because my impression is that those were existing practices that had been in place so that it's true that those cities and townships would have expected.
So, I guess my point is if we're going to look at doing this, we've got to look at it in a way that we're doing it. I, I don't think we can go back to cities and townships at this point. In the future, we should have that discussion.
And, I mean, I-
And we can, we can do that discussion in the future, but right now, this falls just on the county.
Yeah, we wouldn't have the opportunity. I understand, time is of the essence. And, you know, our fund balances, I mentioned to board, you know, are sufficient to cover this, this local matching costs. You know, it's probably useful at some point to have a, a conversation about cost sharing on equipment going forward.
Right.
Of course, this is very expensive equipment, but then maybe that's another conversation for another day.
It is.
But I'm also, excuse me, I'm also hearing though, if we can do the match, but that still shorts us about $30,000.
Sure.
I mean, it takes us to 74,000 if we match, and the request is for just under 102.
Good, Mr. Chair, good, good point there, Scott, and I was going to, or Mr. Johnson, I was going to bring that up, is my, my recommendation would be, let's utilize the 37,000, match that, but go back to the cities and townships and basically say, okay, if we want all of them, we need to pony up another, you know, $30,000, and, and we're looking for some help from the townships and cities.
I, I think the only concern there may be though is if, then we're not buying all of them. And then how do we decide who's getting them and who's not getting them? Or maybe the auditor's office would be that, but somebody's deciding that.
You have to realize that, I think we got three, three different precincts that don't use them other than maybe once a year. And if you come to, to Langola or the city of Gilman and want them to pony up, they're going to say, why? We use mail-in ballots.
Right.
That's what they're going to say. So, I, I, we can't go back at any point on this particular item in my book.
Just in the future.
And try, try to get the cities or towns, townships to pony up. I think going forward, we can have that conversation and tell them that, you know, this is an ongoing deal, and another 10 years we'll be redoing it again, that you're going to be on the hook for it then.
Yeah. Monty?
I just want to nail it way back when, when this equipment was first purchased. We had, we got substantial grants from, through the state, helped by it. But obviously, that environment is very different now where you don't get the full cost covered. So, you know, way back when this stuff was purchased many years ago, it wasn't necessary to ask for local shares.
And I would, I would venture to say that if we don't take it now, there probably won't be another processing or grant period for another few years that we could.
Mr. Chair, and I'd agree, I think we take advantage of the grant. I just think we need to keep in front of us that this is a $65,000 investment, not a $37,000 one.
Right.
So.
And, Mr. Chair, every time we, every time we say our fund balance is good and we use it, it, it's not as good the next time, you know, and, and I, you know, there, everybody was lucky enough to get a lot of this ARPA money and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I'll go with the, the board. I think we got to use this money, but at some point, we got to have the partners within our county start paying for some of this stuff, because everybody always is relying on the county to, to, to foot the bill.
Well, and, and, Mr. Chair, and maybe that's future discussion coming up shortly from the Treasurer's Office and us about establishing a, a maintenance account or what you'd like, a pre-purchase account.
Yeah.
Include townships and cities in this.
Correct. That way, it's not such a big bite every, every time it happens.
Which is what? It's been 16 years.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah.
If you-
And actually, side note, these Omni ballots, this new assisted voting device costs less than our Auto Mark's cost 16 years ago.
What does the board want to do with this item?
I would, I think that precincts were willing to, they, they were looking forward to new equipment to dealing with the upgrade. I don't think they would mind putting something forward to help overcome the, the last part of that cost.
Commissioner Slung, my only concern is that, for the timing we have, I don't believe we can-
Yeah.
No. No, and it's-
If we, if we choose to do this, it's on us.
On us.
Right now, but going forward, yes. I, I just don't think we can approach our precincts on, on April 19th for an April 30th deadline and say, give us some money. That's my opinion.
There's no way, and they only meet so often, too.
Sure.
And they've got their budgets set already, too.
So, it does appear, Mr. Chair, that to fully fund all 24, we would need a local match of 59,470. And again, that, that could come out of our reserves.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we purchase the, the new Omni Ballot tablets at 59,469 or 470. And it comes out of our reserves for now.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Nadine, so we took those numbers off of that sheet you gave us, and then that would be the correct numbers, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was included in your packet, correct?
Right. That is correct. Yep, that 59,000.
Because the townships and the cities do pay for the maintenance and the software upgrades on a yearly basis.
Yep. Commissioner Kapinski?
I just, I want to clarify some of my comments. It's not that I'm coming down on the townships or the cities. They have never been asked to-
Right.
-pay for this before. And it's, it's unfair of some of my comments to, to look like that. So, I'm just saying that we move forward and, and we, we start looking at ways to partner on some of this stuff in the future.
I think we take this matter up in January.
Yep.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nadine.
At this time, I'll reconvene my regular board meeting and turn it over to the Human Services Board. Commissioner Johnson?
All right, thank you. We'll call to order our Human Services Board meeting. Is there any additions or changes to our agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll motion, approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second to approve our agenda is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, item one.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve our consent agenda. Any discussion regards to those meeting minutes from April 5th of 2020? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Bob?
No. Uh, Mr. Chair, Bob, I want to thank you and Sandy for joining me at the city of Stock Rapids having a workshop. I appreciate that. You're welcome.
And also thank you for yesterday's information during our call. That was good information on childcare stuff.
Yes.
For us.
Anytime.
To review, so, thank you.
It's up to the day.
Members, anything else for Bob? All right.
Thank you.
We're going to turn our Human Services Board. I'll turn it back over to the board chair.
Thank you. Next up, Monty.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if we just move on a ditch? You know, since you got some folks here?
Yes, let's do that.
We kind of promised 10, I'm happy to wait. Sure.
We'll reconvene this one later.
Chris, are you going to join us in person or are you going to stay virtual?
I was going to try to join you in person, but I am sitting in my office right now. It'll take me several minutes to get down to downtown.
What's the board prefer? You want to go ahead and?
Mr. Chair, I'd prefer to have Chris here in person.
Chris, I would prefer to have you here in person, too.
Okay.
To answer the questions.
Then I'll go ahead and do mine.
All right, I will get there.
Go speed.
The item before you is the resolution about ARPA funds. And, you know, again, the conversation yesterday, we did not arrive at a, at a detailed plan, so I'm not going to ask you to approve that plan. Maybe just, just recap a little of that discussion. Really, the purpose yesterday was to decide, does the, does the county want to take any of the standard revenue allowance and thereby essentially free the money of some of the ARPA restrictions? And we did show that we had counted on using about 670,000 of the ARPA funds to help lower this year's levy and, and consider that as a revenue loss. There was also desire to use, to put about $500,000 of new resources into the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. As Amanda pointed out, there apparently is sufficient demand for more gap findings announced there, and our loan fund balance isn't particularly large and really can't afford many more loans. So, in round numbers, about 1.1 million we would claim as a revenue loss allowance, again, to sort of free that money of the ARPA restrictions. And then all the remaining of our, about, let's see, about six, let's see, we're getting eight, so about $7 million roughly would remain in the ARPA bucket and be subject to the ARPA limitations. Although, it is certainly fairly broad broadband, water wastewater, and some of the things that we spent the cares funding on, all those things, as you recall, business assistance grants and so on and so forth, would be eligible ARPA uses. But I just want to make sure it's abundantly clear that, that about roughly $7 million would have to be spent according to ARPA, ARPA rules. So, so when Jackie does her report here towards the end of this month, we'll claim about 1.1 million as a revenue loss. Again, then that, that frees it from those ARPA restrictions. So, really, no action requested?
No.
You know what? I think we're going to schedule another committee of the whole soon, and we'll have this opportunity to meet with the broadband providers. And at some point, then I will ask the board to adopt this resolution with a fairly detailed plan of how we would use the ARPA funds, but knowing, of course, it's subject to change as circumstances warrant.
Is this something that we were going to address after you had the broadband meeting?
After the 26th.
26th?
We need to take, we need to take some action before April 30th.
That is correct.
At this point, really, again, there's no formal, if, if the board is comfortable with that 1.1 million as the revenue loss.
I'm not comfortable with that small amount.
Then I don't, then, then no action is necessary.
Mr. Chair, I thought we had to set a committee of the whole today for that next-
The purpose of the committee of the whole was, was really to further iron out all the details of how we're going to use our ARPA funds.
Right.
How much for broadband, how much for, for example, possible assistance to cities for water wastewater, how much for childcare, how much for any other possible purpose that you may, you may want to do. You know, and again, I think that, that, that's useful because it tells any interested party, here's how we're going to use the ARPA money, here's how much you have to spend, for example. It's good to have that, but again, knowing it's subject to change.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pop?
Um, I'm not comfortable with just leaving it in the ARPA bucket. I want a designated amount of 3, 3.5 million left in there, and the rest is put into the general fund to use as we see fit. And we can still document and everything like that, but we may have something come up where we want to use it for something else. And I, I think 3.5 is kind of where I sit.
So, let me give you an example. Let's just say, for example, you said you wanted to take the remaining, you wanted to take some amount and, and take the ARPA label off of it. Then you'd say, okay, you would want, you would need that then to spend it on some typical county purpose. So, think about how county government spends money. You might spend it on roads, a county building, county vehicles. Again, typical county purposes. That's why you would want to take that ARPA label off and free it up. So, thinking, thinking again about, how would we normally spend money today on all the things you would spend it on? That's why you would want to free it up.
Right.
Uh, because, for example, under, under the ARPA rules, we couldn't use it to renovate this building. We couldn't use it to buy a plow truck. We couldn't use it to buy squads in the sheriff's office, stuff like that. So, those are reasons you would want to re, I call, I say the term, re-characterize it as general county money.
Mr. Chair, Monty, I'm a little confused. Help me out.
Okay.
I understood, I understood yesterday that after we meet with the broadband, we're going to get a better idea of what is demanded of the county as far as the demand, the county's resources towards the broadband.
That's true, right.
Okay, so we're going to have a little better number than we have in front of us now, which I think will help determine-
What?
The board's direction on what they want in ARPA and what they want in the general fund.
Sure.
But that's why we were going to do another meeting.
And we'd actually have to set another special meeting.
We'd have to set a special meeting because it's due on the 30th.
Yes.
Uh, so, you know, the, you may remember the broadband dollars were somewhere between about 5 million and 8 million.
Yep.
I don't know there's necessarily guarantee that number's going to come down.
No, it may. I'm not willing to spend $5 million. I can tell you that right now.
No, it was made somewhat clear in our, in our call that 3.5-
I'm not willing to spend $5 million on broadband.
3.5 was going to be spent for broadband, and then I threw 1.5 in there for, to help in the cities for, uh, infrastructure.
Sewers.
Which is water and sewers.
Yeah, that will be in the ARPA, and that's, that'll be in the ARPA.
So, for example, right, if you, if you put 5 million in-
That's still a discussion that we need to have, whether we're going to give the cities that money. We're a long ways from that, whether we're going to give the cities that 1.5 million.
But that money would have to be in ARPA.
ARPA in order to do it.
Yeah. I, that's, that is my conclusion. If you want to provide some assistance in cities for water wastewater, it needs to stay in the ARPA bucket.
Yes.
Right. It really should stay in the ARPA bucket. I'm not convinced if you free it up, you could still make a grant to a city for its, because you think about, let's just pretend as this moment, could you take a 1.5 million of Benton County levy money and give it to a city to help them upgrade their water wastewater? I don't believe you can.
Can't.
So, if you keep it as ARPA, then the authority is clear. You can. You can make a, a, a grant to that city for water wastewater improvements. So, that's just something to think about. And that's one thing I didn't want, I want to make sure I didn't walk us into a problem and say, okay, free up all this money, and then suddenly you can't use it for the things you wanted to.
Yep.
And that was, again, consequently, the reason why I asked Michelle, okay, we freed it up, can you use it for broadband? Answer was no.
Right.
Yep.
There's no authority.
Mr. Chair, the, I, I could have swore, because I actually tried to say yesterday, let's, let's set a committee of the whole, and we had to push it today because it has to be on the county board.
Well, Commissioner Kapinski, I think we can set a committee of the whole, but I think we have to set a special board meeting to establish that after we have the-
After, yeah.
And we're running a-
Which, so we don't do a committee of the whole, we set a special board meeting to have that discussion after next Mondays, or Tuesdays.
The 26th, the 26th is our-
Broadband.
Is our meeting with broadband providers. I, I think, we, we hope we can get greater clarification out of this meeting. You know, they're 45, 45-minute sessions with these provider. Hopefully, we can. We'll see. I don't know.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we're understanding each other here correctly. Commissioner Pop, so the ARPA money, I mean, hypothetically, we put 5 and 1/2 million in there. That doesn't mean it's all going to broadband.
No.
Correct.
No.
I just want to make sure we're-
But we have no other plan for some of the ARPA money. I mean, it's a wide deal. And maybe we want to reconstruct a road someplace.
Sure.
Then, you know, we can't use it for ARPA then, out of the ARPA fund.
That's true. If you, if you keep it in the ARPA bucket, then it, roads would not be permissible. Roads would not be a permissible use.
So, that's why I'm not willing to let that all sit in the ARPA fund.
Well, I just, I just want a clarification that your, your opposition wasn't 5 million to broadband, because I don't think anybody thought that.
No, no, it wasn't. Well, I would never spend 5 million on broadband.
I, I understand that, but, yeah.
We, we did come up with a number of 3.5.
Right.
All the way in the beginning.
Yeah.
And-
And we're not even sure we're there right now.
No.
We've got, we've, we've got more conversations. I think we need to have another committee of the whole to talk about this a little bit further.
We might as well go to a special board meeting then, because-
Yeah.
That's right.
You know, I, I, I should say is, um, you know, I think committee of the whole is sufficient and consensus is sufficient unless you feel you really need a special board meeting. you really need a special board meeting and have formal action on this. You know, again, all we gotta do is just, we have to file a report with the federal government by the end of the month.
So we just need consensus then?
Okay. I, I'm, I'd be happy with consensus through, that we could derive from a committee of the whole sometime after the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be sufficient. And that's all we gotta do is just, we don't need necessarily this, this formal line by line plan of how we're gonna use ARPA. We just gotta tell the federal government how much we're gonna claim as a revenue loss.
Good.
And it can be one nice round number that you feel comfortable with.
Sure.
So.
Fair enough.
Good enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna call the order. The Benton County Ditch Authority, approve or amend the agenda? Motion to approve.
Motion.
Chris, we're not gonna amend it, right? We've got anything to add?
No.
This is pretty much straightforward.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I recall, and Michelle is with this, I think you wanna have some conversation, Michelle, to be really clear.
We, we will.
What?
We will.
You gotta do that.
We will. Come on, guys, let me run this meeting. Okay, I got a motion, I got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number three, approve or amend the meeting minutes for April fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, now, Michelle, I need some clear definition of how we have to approach this. And what you want.
The same thing that we did with six, seven, and nine.
Okay.
I believe I sent you the script with the recommended findings that you should read into the record and then a motion to adopt that language below that. Now, I did put together a quick little PowerPoint to kinda maybe discuss for the crowd essentially why we're doing this, because there seemed to be a lot of consternation at those public hearings regarding the redetermination. So if you have a couple of minutes, I could certainly quickly do that PowerPoint, and I believe Chris could put that up for us.
Yes, please do.
I'll get that on the screen here and, Michelle, I can advance the slides for you. Let's go into.
Thank you, Chris.
Let's go to here. I wanna share the screen. We'll share that. Make that big. And go into presentation mode.
Okay, so essentially I wanted to explain why we do this redetermination of benefits and damages. Next slide, please. Once we create the ditch system, you'll see that there's language from case law that states every owner of land who has recovered damages or been assessed for benefits has a property right in the maintenance of the ditch in the same condition as it was when originally constructed. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Chris, could you please minimize the go-to meeting information there so we can see the full slide? Is that possible?
Is it this one?
Thank you.
You need me to go back to the previous slide?
That's okay.
Okay.
So the original benefits and damages for the majority of these ditches are back from the nineteen hundreds. They currently do not represent your present day land values, and the benefited or damaged areas may have changed. Next slide, please. So in order to start a redetermination process, we have two possibilities of doing that. The first is upon board authority, which is what we've done in this matter. And we just have to show that there's definitely been a change in those land values or the area has changed. And as some constituents have noted, there is also provision for twenty-six percent of the property owners to also petition. And they would have to meet those criteria as well. Next slide, please. So there are two primary reasons why we redetermine benefits. And the first is, is that everyone should pay their fair share for that system. And if you're not on the assessment role, but you're benefiting from the ditch system, you're not paying your fair share. And it's not fair to those that are being assessed those benefits. So we're trying to make it fair, and even if everyone who's benefiting shares in that burden of the cost. The second reason is, is when we go to maintain those ditches or repair those ditches, we have thresholds that we need to meet in order to issue repair, and those are cost thresholds. So that is the second reason. Next slide, please. So one of the ways that we may maintain the ditch or repair the ditch is through the inspection. And the cost threshold there is in bold, and that is the ditch authority may not levy an assessment for repairs or maintenance on one drainage system for more than twenty percent of the benefits of the drainage system, one thousand dollars per mile of open ditch in the ditch system, or the dollar amount requiring the solicitation of sealed bids. And currently, that dollar amount is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So as long as the routine maintenance does not exceed that, you can proceed, but if it does, then we've got bigger issues. And this is where we recommend petitioning for repair if we have a cost that exceeds that. But for petitions for repair, you have a different cost threshold. And that is that the cost of repair will not exceed the total benefits determined in the original drainage system proceeding. And this is where we're running into trouble, because these determinations have not been updated since the early nineteen hundreds. We've got very low figures for what our benefits are. You could go to the next slide, please, Chris. So what I have done is, this is what we currently have for our benefits prior to the redetermination process. The total benefits for ditch three are two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars. For ditch six, a thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Ditch nine, twelve thousand six hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. Ditch ten at twelve thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. And I highlighted these ditches because these are the ditches that have repairs. These are repair petitions, and these are the ditches where the cost of the repair cannot exceed those benefits. And right now, what we're looking at for ditch three, an estimate of repair, we don't have the final report filed yet, but the estimates that are coming in are a hundred and eighty-two thousand. If we had to remain with that original benefit determination of two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars, the board would have to deny the request for repair. So we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to move forward. We're trying to update the system so that we can actually make these repairs. Another example for ditch six, we're looking at an estimated repair cost of between four hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars to five hundred and twelve dollars, four hundred dollars, five hundred and twelve thousand and four hundred dollars. So there alone, again, we've got eight thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. So we would have to deny that repair petition as well. Next slide, please, Chris. Now are the new proposed numbers for redetermined benefits. And you can see that our estimations change quite a bit. We're looking at ditch three, now our estimated benefits are two thousand, two hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. So that repair now would not exceed that benefit. We could move forward if the board so chooses. Again, for ditch six, we have one million forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-one cents. Clearly now, that repair would fit within that cost threshold. So that's the importance of going through this process and why it's become necessary. Because unfortunately, other boards have failed to keep up with their duties regarding these ditches. We're trying to make things right, and we clearly have some ditches that probably need some repairs. So in order to facilitate all of that, this process has been really important. And I understand that there's frustration with how long it's taken with some of the numbers that we're seeing. But it is an important process to move forward with the obligation to maintain these ditches. Next slide, please. Alright, so the next step will be, once we get these items redetermined, these ditches redetermined for benefits, and we can move forward with potential repairs, we will receive either repair reports on those ditches that we have petitions for or drainage inspection reports for those routine maintenance inspections. So once we get that, then the board will have to make determination on necessary repairs. And to be clear for the crowd, the repair is only returning the ditch to the as constructed and subsequently improved condition. It may include resloping, leveling of spoil banks, removal of obstructions, some incidental straightening. But what it will not do is the repair will not increase hydraulic capacity. It will not widen ditches. It will not lower culverts. So what we will be doing in the next step, once this is all completed, is we'll be considering those repairs that get us back to that as constructed, original alignment. Any questions?
Well, that's.
Mr. Chair?
That's very broad.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kapinski.
Michelle, thank you for that. I was wondering if you could just briefly cover the legalities of this board too? Because a lot of this stuff is directed from way above us, and we have the final determination of spending people's money, but it's, we can't help pay for it, and it's directed above us. Sometimes that gives a little bit more of a clearer, clearer picture for the people in the audience.
Yeah, so there is an entire section that talks about the board's duty to maintain these ditches. And that is in the beginning of one oh three E. So you guys are charged with the duty to maintain and inspect and repair. And that occurs once that drainage system is created. Then there's an entire section that deals with repairs, and that starts at one oh three E point seven oh one. So you guys are following the statute, and you have that duty, unfortunately, by statute to do this. And the reason why you have become the drainage authority and why you manage this is it's much more efficient for you all to manage this instead of private property owners going to each of their neighboring property owners to facilitate a drainage system that will help them utilize their property. So it's more for efficiency purposes for the benefit of those benefiting members of the ditch system.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we'll do a continuation of a public hearing for county ditches four, five, ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen and consider adopting findings and order accepting the viewer's report. We will be taking each ditch separately. Chris?
Alright.
Ditch four.
I will start with ditch four. So you should've received a draft copy of the findings in order last week. I have it up on the screen. It is something that we would like to read, at least to read the order.
This is where you come into play again, Michelle. What do we truly have to read for the public?
Okay, so for the script that I gave you, I believe I identified different sections.
Correct. Twenty-five.
I would recommend that you read out loud. And then one of the board members should motion to move and read the language for that motion. So I believe it was twenty-five.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine and thirty-three.
Yep, thank you. Chris, continue, please.
Alright, for county ditch four, findings number twenty-five, the original benefited acreage was two hundred acres with a total benefits of two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. The viewers determined that the total acreage benefited now is six hundred ninety-three point eight one acres with total benefits of four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Damages for perennial vegetation strips were determined to be eight thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. And it was number twenty-nine, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
On number twenty-nine, upon review of information provided to the board during the public hearing, the board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited damages areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current existing actual benefits and benefited acres.
Thirty-three.
Based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers and the public comments received, the board finds, A, that the viewer's report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota statute, chapter one oh three E; B, that the viewer's report is complete and correct; C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to the benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewer's report; D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewer's report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code; and E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strips as reported as damages in the viewer's report is necessary under Minnesota statute, chapter one oh three E point zero two one. Do we need to read the order as well, or?
The motion to be, to order.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. We'll do that in a little bit. So now we're gonna reopen the public hearing for number ditch four. We will give anybody three minutes to speak if there's anything new to add. Anybody to speak on ditch four? Anyone? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Now, you can go ahead and make a motion for the order. And that's what you were going to, Chris, right?
Yeah.
That was your, okay.
Mr. Chair, do you need a member to make the motion and read the order?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the board acting as the drainage authority for Benton County ditch number four. We hereby order as follows. Item A, the redetermined benefits of Benton County ditch four, the viewer's report and the benefits and damages statement attached here too as exhibit A are hereby adopted by the board and shall be used in place of original benefits and damages in all subsequent proceedings. Item B, the viewers are allowed payment of their account of work. Item C, the county auditor treasure shall ensure that the redetermined benefits replace existing benefits previously determined for Benton County ditch number four. Item D, the damages for the acquisition of the perennial vegetation buffer area shall be paid, and the perennial vegetation buffer area is established as required by statute. Item E, the effective date of the acquisition of the perennial vegetation buffer strips shall be May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And item F, the board staff is directed to work with the county recorder to ensure that the drainage system and the perennial vegetation buffer area acquisition is reflected in the property records of affected landowners.
Okay, we got a motion?
I'll second it.
And we've got a second. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, if not, Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Schlongen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Passes. Moving forward, ditch number five. Chris?
Alright. Here we go, we get county ditch number five. Alright, county ditch number five, item twenty-five in the findings. The original benefited acreage was five hundred ninety-three acres with a total benefits of seven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and zero cents. The viewers determined that the total acreage benefited now is one thousand one hundred four point five four acres with total benefits of five hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Damages for perennial vegetation buffer strips were determined to be thirty-three thousand two hundred five dollars and zero cents. Item number twenty-nine, upon, upon review of information provided to the board during the public hearing, the board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited damages areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current existing actual benefits and dam, benefits and benefited areas. Item thirty-three, based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers and the public comments received, the board finds, A, that the viewer's report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota statutes, chapter one oh three E; B, that the viewer's report is complete and correct; C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to the benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewer's report; D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewer's report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code; and E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strips as reported as damages in the viewer's report is necessary under Minnesota state, Minnesota statute, chapter one oh three E point zero two one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, just for clarification, I'm sorry, did I miss twenty? Mr. Chair, excuse me, just for clarification, I'm sorry, did I miss twenty-eight?
No, Chris did.
Yeah. Did we miss twenty-eight, I believe?
Oh, I apologize. Item twenty-eight for county ditch number five reads, "The viewers included in their determinations the amount of damages necessary to acquire and establish a one-rod perennial vegetation buffer strip along all reaches of open ditch on Benton County ditch number five."
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Johnson.
I thought I missed.
Okay, now we'll reopen the public hearing for ditch number five. Anybody willing to speak to the board? We'll have a total of three minutes. I have to go through the process. I know where you guys are here for. One more time for ditch five. One more time for ditch five. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Next.
Yep, I'll do it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Based on foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the board, the board acting as a drainage authority for Benton County ditch number five hereby orders as follows. A, the redetermination benefits of Benton County ditch number five, the viewer's report, and the benefits and damages statement attached hereto as exhibit A are hereby adopted by the board and shall be used in place of the original benefits and damages in all subsequent proceedings. B, the viewers are allowed payment of their account of work. C, the county auditor treasurer shall ensure that the redetermination benefit replaced the existing benefits previously determined for Benton County ditch number five. D, the damages of the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer area shall be paid, and the perennial vegetation buffer area is established as required by statute. The effective, E, the effective date of the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strip shall be May 24, 2022. F, the board shall, the board shall, or the board staff is directed to work with the county recorder to ensure the drainage system and the perennial vegetation buffers areas acquisition is reflected on the property records of affected landowners.
I'll second that. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, again, quick, Michelle, the determination was that the vegetation buffer strip payments would go out in one payment to the property owners. Is that correct?
I believe that's what we decided.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Shlongin.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Now ditch ten. Chris?
Here before us now is the findings in order for county ditch number ten. In the findings, I'll read item number twenty-five. The original benefited acreage for county ditch number ten was 744 acres with a total benefits of $12,665.82. The viewers determined that the total acreage benefited now is 12,834 acre, 12,834.96 acres with total benefits of $8,103,908.4. Damages for perennial vegetation strips were determined to be $5,270.64. Item twenty-eight, the viewers included in their determinations the amount of damages necessary to acquire and establish a one-rod perennial vegetation buffer strip along all reaches of open ditch on Benton County ditch number ten. Number twenty-nine, upon review of information provided to the board during the public hearing, the board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited and damaged areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current existing actual benefits and benefited areas. I'm scrolling past the comments that were received at the public hearing. In item thirty-three of the findings, based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers and the public comments received, the board finds, A, that the viewer's report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota statutes, chapter 103E; B, that the viewer's report is complete and correct; C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to the benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewer's report; D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewer's report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code; and E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strips as reported as damages in the viewer's report is necessary under Minnesota statute, chapter 103E.021.
Thank you. Now we'll reopen the public hearing for number ditch ten, and we'll give any applicant three minutes to speak on ditch ten. Please come to the podium. And state your name and address, please.
My name is Tim Thamert. I own two parcels of land that this is affecting. My address is 6605 Mayhew Lake Road. I own 30 acres with my wife. I also own 10 acres that adjoins to that with my son. The information you guys put out, I can't read for nothing. I've asked several of you people, make sense of this to me, and nobody's, nobody's helped me out with it. I took a picture of it with my phone because I can't read this even with my bifocals. And it says on here that I own two 29.75 acres, two lots like that. I don't own that. I own 30 acres with my wife, and I own 10 acres with my son. The information you guys are giving out here is not true. I've been living there for almost 25 years. I know what my water problems are, and this ditch that you guys are digging. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying there's not a water problem here. There is a water problem here, and it's been there for an awful long time. You all agree with me on that. But nobody has done anything for it. I know several people that have taken upon themselves, and I've heard a lot of people come up here and say, "We had to do this ourselves because nobody was coming out to help us out." So there's a lot of people, private people, that went ahead and did what they needed to do to take care of some water, relieve some water issues. Still, yet, nobody is, from the county, has offered to help. I got some water issues. I got 30 acres there, like I said, plus another 10. So I'm working with 40 acres, and it's a hay field. I planted it all in the hay a year before I retired so that I could make some money to play with my toys. Parts are expensive. Now, it seems to me that no matter what is going on in the economy, you guys are just full bore ahead. Panel down, keep going. Don't get me wrong, I'm not hurting. I plan for retiring. So I do have a savings. But this, you guys sneakily went around, you're not raising my taxes. No, you're raising my property value, which is going to raise my taxes. And it's going to raise all the levies you guys let happen. I can't keep an eye on Benton County. I can't keep an eye on Watab County and the school board. That's the biggest one.
We're good. Please, just read, just stay with the ditches. I understand your concerns.
What I'm saying is this ditch, I don't care how far deep you dig it, it's not going to help me out. I'm a mile away from that ditch. There's a lot of high ground between me and that ditch. You're saying that the water flows across my property, which nature let happen, you know, with the, I'm not responsible for what's going on a mile down the road. You guys are making me responsible. You're putting that on me, on my shoulders. I don't think that's right. I've been here four times. Not one person has come out to see what I'm talking about. Not one. I'm retired. I'm usually there. I'd know. Nobody's come out. I don't know if I'm not speaking loud enough for you guys to hear. I never planned on selling my place. I built it for myself. And what I put into it was a lot. I'm starting to reconsider. Wife and I have had a good talk, and this just might not be the place for me.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Michelle, are you out there?
I am.
Okay. With Tim's concerns about the, his acres?
Yeah. We didn't get into that, but by statute, it instructs the viewers, and Michelle may help me with the statute reference, it instructs the viewers to consider quarter-quarter sections as determined by the public land survey system. So it's quite possible that the 30 acres that he describes lies partially in one quarter-quarter section and partially in another quarter-quarter section. And that's how the viewer's report, the tabular report that the viewers provide is based on. So they list all the acreage in each quarter-quarter section that receives a benefit.
Mr. Chair, unless I misunderstood what Tim said, I heard him say he has, that the county told him he's got 29.75 and 29.75.
Correct.
That's not 30 and 10.
Right.
Yeah.
They also have my 10 acres that I own with my son. That's also on here.
Well, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that you said that the county's information to you was 29.75 and 29.75.
Right, on the 30. And then there's also, I'm on here again for the 10 acres.
But that's listed as 29.75 also?
No, no, no.
Okay, that's just 10, okay.
So it seems like it's on there double, then?
Yes. We just wanted, we're trying to help for clarification here, Tim. That's why we're asking this question.
Right.
Could you, could you please show, Chris, what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, right here. If you can read this, I'm on there twice with my wife, and I'm also on there again with my son, on the 10 acres. Why the, good luck with that. I did take a picture, blow it up on my phone, if you could almost see it. And this is the information you guys send out to us, and then you wonder why you don't get nobody showing up.
Well, that's why we're trying, that's why we're trying to clarify this.
We're trying to clarify this for you right now.
I thank you for wanting to do that.
So, yeah, this first parcel, uh...
Right here. Timothy and Jacqueline, twice, 29.75, two times. And for somehow, I don't know what this column here is, I can't read it on there for nothing.
So, okay. So, yeah. So, the first one, Timothy and Jacqueline Thamert, in the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter of section 25, township 37, range 31, they're saying there's 29.75 parcel acres, but in that tract, there's 19.73 acres. And all those 19.73 acres benefit. The second line is the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 25, township 37, range 31, also, which is referring to the same parcel of 29.75 acres. And they're saying there are 10.02 acres in that tract, and all 10.02 acres benefit from that.
So that gets us to 30 acres.
The 29.75 acres, as by the county identifies it with one parcel ID number, but it sits in two different quarter-quarter sections. Anyone that's familiar with the public land survey system knows that the sections are divided into quarters and quarter-quarter sections.
So of the 29.75, there's identified as 19 point something that's been, that has benefits, and 10 point something that has benefits.
That add up to the 29.
Which gets to his roughly 30 acres that he's talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not on there double.
Right.
Not on there double.
But this ditch, like I said, in no way does it benefit me. I couldn't tile over to this ditch if I wanted to. You got a county road right there, and there's a lot of high ground.
Okay.
I know my property. I've been dealing with it for a long time.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Anybody else? Ditch ten.
Good morning. Colleen Reiner at 2759 65th Street Northeast. I have some questions based on particularly Michelle's comments. So with the new valuation, with the retermination of benefits, now there's a new amount that is a maximum. Over what period of time does that maximum encompass, that eight-plus million dollars? Are you talking about a single repair or a number of repairs over time? So when we're looking at a major repair right now for ditch 10, because it's a significant repair, how long does that 8.1 million dollars cover? And then, is it okay if I just ask all the questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So that pretty much covers the, what timeframe does that encompass for the max? Does this mean for any single repair, or is it a bunch of repairs altogether over some amount of time? I think, I had another question about when will the buffer strips be purchased? Does that happen immediately? It sounds like, based on what these petitions are showing, that that happens immediately?
Twenty-four.
And when does the valuation go in effect? So this redetermination of benefits is being done, kind of relates to the questions that keep being asked about, does this affect our property valuation? Then for the future, how does that get balanced out? And because we see ourselves paying more in taxes because our property value is going to go up, but we're also paying this big assessment, at what point will we pay this assessment? I understand there's a whole process that has to happen, which includes approving a actual repair, once all of that has been figured out. And at what point do we then actually incur the additional expense for the repair? I think that concludes my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Oh, yes, please.
Please. All right. Okay, so just like, we haven't done a redetermination on ditch 10 since probably 1905, 1914. I'm not sure when this ditch was. But those values of those benefits, I'm just going back to my slide. So until these benefits are adopted today, the system's benefits are valued at $12,665.82. So that hasn't changed in over 100 years. This current process is to update those benefits. So now we're valuing the benefits at $8,103,908.84. And that is your current value of all those benefits. So that's not an assessment, that's not a cost that is borne by the property owners. That's just, here is what the actual present-day land values reflect for the benefit value. So that benefit value will remain in place until an additional redetermination is done in the future. That value will remain. And in fact, if you kind of look at what we had for ditch seven, ditch seven was redetermined in the 1980s. That value at that time of those benefits was $293,911.05. In 40 years, that valuation has gone up 10 times. We're now at $2 million. So until we redetermine again in the future, the value for those benefits will remain at that $8 million mark for ditch 10. Then the repair, if there's a petition for repair on this, that estimated repair will be included in the repair report. You'll be assessed for the cost of that repair. And then after that, hopefully, once we get the ditch up to snuff, we will be able to do routine maintenance, and that maintenance will be much less costly. And hopefully, we'll be able to cover that with those funds that we'll be collecting as a part of an annual assessment after the repair is done. Does that answer your questions?
Partially. If the repair, the... Partially. If the repair, the, the repair was talked about potentially in pieces, um, when we had the hearing. Particularly because of the beaver dams and things that are downstream and, whoops, sorry, and the, I talk with my hands. And the feeder, um, ditches, et cetera, and the, you know, and ten continues on down into eleven. If one part is done, like, if you look at it and you say, okay, the whole repair might be this very large number, because it will be. But we can start with, for example, the area where the beaver dams are. And do that, and then see what happens. I don't know if that's an approach that's being considered, and I understand that that's a future sort of thing to look at. But if only one part is done, even though there's a whole bigger part that maybe will be done, are we just talking about being assessed for that one part that will be done initially? And then anything subsequently would be approved separately and assessed in that timeframe? Is that how that's going to work?
My-
Chris, can you answer that?
Well, yeah, I, I, I do like to remind people that, that this is also established as a public water on the DNR's public water inventory. So I don't know if the DNR commissioner will just give blanket approval to, to clean out miles and miles of county ditches as a public water and, you know, um, what the DNR tries to accomplish. I see we may get to a point where we have to uh, work with them and say, based on our survey, the bottom of the ditch needs to be here. We've got a high spot in this one location. Please let us go in there and clean that back out to the elevation it needs to be. Or that we have these field crossings that are set too high. We need to please let us lower those. That's what, I just want to establish that expectation. We may not get blanket approval just to clean every linear foot of county ditch number ten, since it is a public water. Yeah, so, and back to assessing it, so any, as established in one oh three E, any costs to that drainage system i- is borne by the, those receiving a benefit from it. So if it's a small repair, uh, today, that would be assessed back onto, uh, the landowners. If it's another repair in a few years, those same people would, would share in that cost.
Mr. Chair? I think, I think to clarify her, I think you answered her question. It's, you're not going to get charged at all. It's just every time they do a piece, you'll get charged at that time, correct?
Yeah, well, I, I can say what we have done, um, the board, this, or, you know, that the board has done in the past. On the last repair projects was, yeah, we, we repaired county ditch thirteen and fifteen. Uh, and the board did allow the cost of that repair to re, be repaid over a period of seven years with a small amount of interest. But there is in statute a requirement to maintain it. Once we do a repair today, um, and that's something that we may explore is instead of that full assessment, uh, for the whole costs, if it's a small annual assessment, so there's a fund built up over time, and landowners aren't hit with a large assessment at once.
And that's for further discussions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, so just for clarification, I'm trying to understand Colleen's question here too, is I, I think there's a, there's a connection with property owners that you've got this eight-point-one million dollars worth of, of
Benefit.
Benefit. That's not the dollar that gets spread out to the property owners.
Correct.
So if the repair comes in hypothetically at five hundred thousand dollars, it's going to get distributed amongst the, the percentage that they're benefiting that ditch.
Correct.
It's not, the eight-point-one million is just establishing what the benefits are to the ditch system, not what's going to be spread as an assessment to property owners.
Yeah.
Did I answer that question? Because that's, I was with you on the question, so I want to make sure I answered it.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, because what Michelle presented said that's the maximum that can be spent. And so part of my question is the maximum over what period of time?
Until it's redetermined again in the future, is what I heard her say, you know, until a, a future board says we're going to redetermine the benefits of this ditch again. Hopefully, it's not a hundred years.
Especially since we've been living there almost that long.
Will, is that right, Chris?
Michelle, in statute, maybe you could, well, maybe I could even bring up that presentation again. There is a statute that says that not more than twenty percent of those total benefits, uh, could be spent in one year. Is that correct, Michelle?
So that is regarding a routine maintenance. So yes, we are limited by how much we can assess or charge based on that particular provision. So we can't exceed twenty percent of those benefits for routine maintenance. So eight million, so twenty percent of eight million is
Two.
Yeah, about two million.
One point six million. So, routine maintenance could not exceed one point six million. Um, and then if it's a petition repair, it cannot exceed that eight million. But I would hope that we do not see a repair that would cost one point six million. And if it did, if we would take it through the petition process.
Right.
My experience in conversations with counterparts in other parts of the state is, that's probably what drives the redetermination, is when they start getting estimates to do repairs and they start hitting that threshold, then maybe that triggers the time to, to look at that and see if land values have changed. As Reiner had brought up a question too, that I think worth, uh, addressing too. I think there's also a misconception that that eight million dollars or what the viewers, it says that their benefits value is, that, that somehow is going to be turned over to the appraiser, and that's going to be reflected on property tax statements. And I don't believe that the appraiser is tasked with looking at ditch benefits when determining, um, taxable value, so.
That's a good clarification.
Right, because both them had that, that question.
Exactly.
And your tax values are only based on sales of similar properties in your area. That, I mean, sure, if your neighbor's going to, got a great farm for sale, and he gets ten thousand an acre, your values are going to go up because you're, you're within so many feet. And the same with Tim's, you know, he's got a thirty-acre place with, you know, a nice home and a shop and all that he had told us. If you sell it and somebody around you has the similar situation, they're, they're taxing it up because your, your place is worth a lot of money.
So.
I've got a question there. Now, you come off, people come out and they tell me that my place is worth, you know, X amount of dollars.
We really-
I've got an unfinished house.
We have.
I've got an unfinished shop. It's only a pole barn with a cement floor. I, I, it's not finished off, all heated up, nice and all that, no. I got a, you know, my house isn't finished. Three-quarters of the basement, that's, that's not finished at all. But yet you guys put this high price on there. When I go to sell it, say I, I-
Tim, this, this is a question that we can just go over to the, uh,
Assessor.
County assessor's office, and we can talk about that, and we can bring the county assessor out there, you know, to, to take a look at your property, okay? So right now, let's try to keep it to the ditch.
I'm just wondering, if, when I go to sell it, and I, I, I've had family members that, that this has happened to, they don't get what you guys say it's worth. What happens at that point?
And, and just to respond to that, in today's, um, situation when land and buildings are selling, that's very rare, that you don't get what the, the county has got it assessed for. I mean, I wouldn't sell my property for more than about forty, fifty percent of what the county's got it assessed for because of agricultural land selling what it is. And going back to what I was trying to explain, uh, eight, six, eight years ago, there was a hu, um, huge chunk of land sold up in my area. It drove my values up about three thousand an acre. Just like that. And that can happen to you, it can happen to anybody, because it's based on sales.
Okay.
These levies, when these levies come up, you go off of my property balance.
Let's keep moving forward and sticking it to the ditches. Let's just keep it to the ditches. Anybody else on the ditches? Ditch ten. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. What do we want to do with ditch ten?
Okay, um, based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the Benton County, the Board of Drainage Action and the Ditch Authority hereby as follows. The redetermination benefits of county ditch number ten, the viewers' report and the benefited and damaged statements attached heretofore as exhibit A are hereby adopted by the, by the Board and shall be used in place of the original benefits and all damages in, in all subs- sub- substantial proceedings. The viewers are allowed payment of their account for the work. The county audit, the county auditor treasurer shall ensure that the redetermination benefits place the existing benefits previously determined by Benton County ditch ten. The damages for the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffers areas shall be paid, and the perennial vegetation buffers are established as required by statute. The effective date of the acquisitions of perennial vegetation buffers strips shall be May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. The Board, the Board staff is directed to work with the county recorders to ensure that the damage system and the perennial vegetation buffers or acquisitions is reflected on the property records of the affected landowners. Mr. Chair, I move for that.
I'll second.
I apologize. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Passes. Ditch, ditch eleven, Chris.
All right. For us here is the findings in order for county ditch number eleven. I'll read item number twenty-five findings. The original benefited acreage was four hundred and seventy-two acres with total benefits of nine thousand nine thousand forty-five dollars and zero cents. The viewers determine that total acreage benefited now is three thousand five hundred and seventy point five-nine acres with total benefits of two million two hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Damages for perennial vegetation strips were determined to be fifty thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Item twenty-eight. The viewers included in their determinations the amount of damages necessary to acquire and establish a one-rod perennial vegetation buffer strip along all reaches of open ditch on Benton County ditch number eleven. Item twenty-nine. Upon review of information provided to the Board during the public hearing, the Board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited and damaged areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current, existing, actual benefits and benefited areas. And then here's the record of all the testimony heard at the meeting. And then item thirty-three. Based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers, and the public comments received, the Board finds, A, that the viewers' report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota statute, chapter one oh three E. B, the viewers' report is complete and correct. C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewers' report. D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewers' report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code. And E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strips are reported as damages in the viewers' report is necessary under Minnesota statute one oh three E point zero two one.
We will now open the public hearing again for ditch eleven. One more time for ditch eleven. Okay, we'll close the public hearing for ditch eleven. I'll make the motion, uh, based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the Board. The Board acting as the drainage authority for Benton County ditch eleven hereby orders as follows. The redetermination benefits of the Benton County ditch eleven, the viewers' report and the benefits and damages statement attached heretofore as exhibit A are hereby adopted by the Board and shall be used in place of the original benefits and damages and all subsequent proceedings. I need some water, too. The viewers are allowed payment of their account of work. The utter treasurer shall ensure that the determination benefits replace the existing benefits previously determined for Benton County ditch eleven. The damages for the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer areas shall be paid, and the perennial vegetation buffer areas established are required by statute. The effective date of the acquisition of the perennial vegetation buffer strip shall be May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The Board staff is directed to work with the county recorder to ensure that the drainage system and the perennial vegetation buffer area acquisition is reflected on the property records of affected landowners.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, Beth, roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Chris, ditch twelve.
All right, we'll repeat this process for ditch twelve. Before us is the findings in order of ditch twelve. Item twenty-five states, the original benefited acreage was three hundred and sixty-eight acres with a total benefits of seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and zero cents. The viewers determine that the total acreage benefited now is nine hundred fifty point one-three acres with total benefits of four hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Damages for perennial vegetation strips were determined to be twenty-five thousand four hundred three dollars and sixty-six cents. Item twenty-eight. The viewers included in their determinations the amount of damages necessary to acquire and establish a one-rod perennial vegetation buffer strip along all reaches of open ditch on Benton County ditch number twelve. Item twenty-nine. Upon review of information provided to the Board during the public hearing, the Board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited damaged areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current, existing actual benefits and benefited acres, areas. Item thirty-three. Based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers and the public comments received, the Board finds, A, that the viewers' report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota statutes, chapter one oh three E. B, that the viewers' report is complete and correct. C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to the benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewers' report. D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewers' report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code. And E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation buffer strips as reported as damages in the viewers' report is necessary under Minnesota statute, chapter one oh three E point zero two one.
Thank you. Now we'll reopen a public hearing for ditch twelve. Anybody on ditch twelve? With that, I'll close the public hearing. What do we want to do with ditch twelve?
Mr. Chair? I'll make a motion based on the foregoing findings and the entire, uh, record of proceedings before the Board. The Board acting as the drainage authority for Benton County ditch number twelve hereby orders as follows. The redetermination benefit of Benton County ditch number twelve, the viewers' report and the benefit of damages statement attached heretofore as exhibit A are hereby adopted by the Board and shall be used in place of the original benefit and damages in all subsequent proceedings. B, the viewers are allowed payment of their work, of their account of work. C, the county auditor treasurer shall ensure that the return, redetermination benefit replace the existing benefits previously determined for Benton County ditch number twelve. D, the damages for the acquisition of the perennial vegetation buffer area shall be paid, and the perennial vegetation buffer areas established as required by statute. E, the effective date of the acquisition of the perennial vegetation buffer strip shall be May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And F, the Board shall, or the Board staff is directed to work with the county recorder to ensure the drainage system and the perennial vegetation buffer area acquisition is reflected on the property records of the affected landowners.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on ditch twelve? Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Ditch fourteen, Chris. Ditch fourteen, Chris.
All right. County Ditch fourteen findings in order before us now. Item twenty-five states, the original benefited acreage was one thousand four hundred and ninety-one acres with a total benefits of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. The viewers determined that the total acreage benefited now is two thousand five hundred and eighty-four-point-seven-two acres with total benefits of one million, one hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight and two cents. Damages for perennial vegetation strips were determined to be twenty-five thousand, ninety-two dollars and five cents. The viewers included in their determinations, I'm sorry, item twenty-eight. The viewers included in their determinations the amount of damages necessary to acquire and establish a one-rod perennial vegetation strip along all reaches of open ditch on Benton County Ditch Number Fourteen. Item twenty-nine. Upon further review of information provided to the Board during the public hearing, the Board further finds and confirms its earlier findings that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited damaged areas determined in the original proceedings, do not reflect current, existing, actual benefits and benefited areas. And then item thirty-three, we're scrolling past all the pub- public testimony received. Item thirty-three. Based on the proceedings herein, the evidence presented during the pendency of these proceedings, the testimony of the viewers, and the public comments received, the Board finds, A, that the viewers' report has been made and other proceedings have been completed under Minnesota Statutes, Chapter one oh-three E, that the viewers' report is complete and correct; C, that no evidence was presented in opposition to the benefits and damages determined by the viewers in the viewers' report; D, that the redetermined benefits and damages as reflected in the viewers' report and as described in the benefits and damages statement as Exhibit A are proper, reasonable, and conform to the drainage code; and E, that the acquisition of perennial vegetation strips as reported as damages in the viewers' reports is necessary under Minnesota Statute, Chapter one oh-three E point zero-two-one.
Thank you, Chris. We'll now open, reopen the public hearing for ditch fourteen.
You didn't ask us for ten, but.
Excuse me?
The question I have applies to all the ditches?
Go ahead.
Colleen Reiner, twenty-seven fifty-nine, sixty-fifth Street Northeast. With the buffer strips that are being acquired, who then owns the buffer strips and what rights do adjoining landowners have to the buffer strips?
Good question.
That's a good question. Uh, Chris or Michelle?
The buffer strips are part of the drainage system, so it's, it's part and parcel of the drain.
So, correct if I'm wrong, Michelle, the, the adjacent landlord still owns that land. It's just that why we award damages is because we're acquiring the rights for them to use it for cropland or anything else. We're saying that from now on, it has to remain as a grass or vegetation buffer strip. So, I know there's been a, in past, I've gotten questions like, well, now they have to let the public hunt on it. No, that's, what I understand, that's not true. And one-rod is, is a surveying term, that's.
Seventeen.
It's sixteen and a half feet as measured from the top of the bank out. So, that's, that's, it still remains that the landowners were just, um, awarding damages because we're restricting the use of that, that area.
Okay.
Chris?
And the underlying fee underneath the, the ditch itself is also still owned by the property owners. We just have an easement.
Okay.
That's why it's in the order that we're going to work with the recorder to make sure that that's recorded, and that's why any future assessment from the assessor, that's reflected in their value, too, if they can't.
They can't assess that.
Since I am also the highway engineer, I think of it kind of like a highway easement. Some, a lot of times, the landlord still owns the fee title under it, but we, we pay for highway easements because we're saying we would like to have some use of that.
Okay. Public hearing is still opening. Anybody else for ditch fourteen? See, and now I'm gonna close the public hearing for ditch fourteen. What do we want to do with ditch fourteen?
Based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the Board, the Board acting as the drainage authority for Benton County Ditch Number Fourteen hereby orders as follows. The determined benefits of Benton County Ditch Number Fourteen, the viewers' report and the benefits and damages statement attached heretofore as Exhibit A are hereby adopted by the Board and shall be used in place of the original benefits and damages in all subsequent proceedings. The viewers are allowed payment of their account of work. The county auditor treasurer shall ensure that the redetermined benefits replace the existing benefits previously determined for Benton County Ditch Number Fourteen. The damages for the acquisition of the perennial vegetation area shall be paid and the perennial vegetation buffer areas established as required by statute. The effective date of the acquisition of the perennial vegetation strips shall be May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The Board staff is directed to work with the county recorder to ensure that the drainage system and the perennial vegetation buffer area acquisition is reflected on the property records of affected landowners.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlangen? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Chris, is that all we have?
I believe that's all we have for ditch authority.
For the ditches? Thank you. Right now, we're adjourned to ditch authority meeting at eleven-thirty-three. Now, we're going back to our regular board meeting. Uh, Commissioner, meeting updates.
I could start, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. I only have two short items. Commissioner Kapinski, myself, and Monty, we're able to attend the City of Foley's, uh, meeting on April fifth, the night after our last board meeting, and basically, we're there to, uh, congratulate them on their low bid that they received for their sewer main force, and also to remind them that we're here to work with them, and, um, we understand that we need, need to have some discussion going forward in regards to, uh, our broadband fiber and locations and, and where projects are gonna start, et cetera. So, it was just a, a good, quick meeting for us to be at. Uh, other than that, I had the planning commission last week, which we've had a lot of discussion on already, so I'll leave that at that. Thank you.
Chair. Mr. Chair? I can go next. I just had a couple, uh, items. Thank you for covering the Foley. Chairman Heinem and I attended the Otter Tail Big Build Seminar for, um, for housing development. Uh, that was very good. That was up in Otter Tail and brought a lot of information back and currently trying to figure out how we can work with our cities to, to do something similar. With that said, MICA, um, there wasn't a ton on there, and, uh, I was just telling people before, or telling board members before, the one thing I pulled out of it is the DNR is looking at, um, taking away shotgun zones and adding rifle to the whole state. Other than that, uh, I, I thank Commissioner Pop for making the APO because I was stranded in Bismarck last week, so, uh, that's all I've got. Okay? Well, and, um, I think Commissioner Schlangen was, we had the GSDC. That was, of all the GSDC meetings I've been going to over the years, this was probably the best one and highly attended. There was a huge amount of people there that was attended. They had some very interesting items on different things that received, uh, awards for different things, um, all Saint Cloud area. Um, there was a couple that really interested me, but well-attended and, and it was probably looking at it, I would say GSDC has gone back to maybe their original plan instead of all the other stuff they tried doing for a number of years, so that was good. And then I went to the APO meeting, um, took a little longer than your forty-five minutes. Did it really? Yeah. Well, they had, uh, the how, the, some kind of a plan they did about travel plan. Oh, travel. And, but I. Overview, though, wasn't it? Um, it was pretty much done, I think. Yeah. But what I got out of it is that people in the Sauk Rapids area per capita are bus-riding nuts. They use the bus all the time.
Yeah.
More so than anyplace else in the Saint Cloud area. It was interesting. I, thank you for, no, for calling me to go. It was interesting. And I think that was all that I had that really, MICA, there wasn't much but that. That's all that I really had.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlangen?
Nothing much going on.
You didn't attend any meetings or anything?
Well, the GSDC.
Yeah.
I think we had the Comfort Solutions in there. They pretty much talked about budget items and.
Okay, thank you. I had a lot of meetings, too. Thank you, Commissioner Pop, because I'm the alternate for the APO. And my meeting went very long, so I couldn't make it anyway. So, I, I had three meetings with the City of Sauk Rapids, of course, one with Commissioner Kapinski, uh, the other one with the council, and then we did a human services workshop group with the City of Sauk Rapids. I had a SHAC meeting. They talked about restructuring and how they're gonna restructure, and, uh, that'll be in June. I, I went to the Mitten Township Board. They had a lot of questions to ask of me, so I answered them. I was requested to go there. Uh, career workforce solutions. They did a lot of talk on workforce unemployment. The jobs available, one-to-one, if there's one job available, there's only one, one unemployed, so-called unemployed person. There's a lot of information. I've got all this information and I can forward it to anybody, the slideshow that they have. What else did I have? I think that was it. Okay, committee of the halls?
Well, I'm gonna share, just to mention, uh, one that, uh, we have here. The Benton Economic Partnership Quarterly Meeting is Thursday, April twenty-eighth. That, that's at seven-thirty. We usually just register everybody for that one, so. Excuse me? You are registered already. And that's at the new park facility called the Clearing in Sauk Rapids. And I know we wanted to schedule another committee of the hall to discuss ARPA funds, ARPA allocation, uh, sometime after the twenty-sixth. So, let's see here. That's a Tuesday, that's the last Tuesday of the month, so obviously, we're left with the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or twenty-ninth as options.
SWCD has their meetings the twenty-seventh in the morning.
The what?
SWCD has their monthly meeting.
Okay, and the twenty-eighth, I got.
BP.
BP in the morning.
And BEPs in the morning.
And the twenty-ninth, I have a, uh, leadership planning board, Regional Three Planning Board meeting at nine o'clock.
So, what's looking like the best?
Because I am chair of that one.
You know, uh, Jagi's gonna need to complete that reporting on the twenty, on the twenty-ninth, so I would suggest we not push that too close.
Could we do Wednesday morning at nine, so somebody could attend? I mean, I'm maybe attending that anyways, but somebody'd be at the SWCD meeting for an hour. I'm sure they'd move the, their agenda around a little bit if they wanted to have discussion on the Mississippi watershed. I went last month, so I'm, I don't know if somebody else can.
I've got a meeting on Wednesdays.
Wednesday afternoon? Wednesday afternoon?
Well, I don't know, I don't know that we need to sit at SWCDs for three hours.
That's an option.
It would be nice to go, if somebody could go, but.
What time is that?
They started at eight.
Is that on the twenty-seventh? Yep.
Yes.
Is that on the twenty-seventh? Like, I am at that conference, too, and with Kyle.
That's right, you are.
You're gone that day?
Yeah, I'm gone. I'm coming back on the twenty-sixth for the interviews and then going back for the twenty-seventh. So, unless I skip the conference.
What time are, are we start on, what time, eight-thirty on Tuesday?
Yes, we begin, I'm sorry. The first session is at nine AM on the twenty-sixth. We probably should be here a few minutes before that, you know, to get situated, and maybe, you know, fifteen minutes before. So, yeah, I would plan on being here about by eight-forty-five. The first session is at nine with the provider.
Till we have the full session?
Yeah.
If we don't have any information.
Any idea what time it's gonna be done?
It's all day.
Oh, it's all. Yeah, it's all, we got five to talk to, so we probably won't be done until.
Three-thirty.
Three, four-ish, yeah. Okay. Just a thought, because it is a committee of the hall, could I zoom in on that? Sorry. You know, technically, a committee of the hall is just a special board meeting. We call it a cow, but really, it's just a special board meeting, and all the notice requirements apply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, all the typical notice, yeah, unfortunately, virtual is not available to us, so.
What, what do you've got avail, what do you have available, Jarrett? You're leaving Wednesday, you said?
Uh, Monday, and I'll be back Wednesday. I don't know what time it, unless I just go up for Monday and come back.
The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth?
Nope, it's a twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. So. I'm in Brainerd.
What about the twenty-eighth? How?
I'm good on that.
You, you're not.
I'm not good. I got BP in the morning and then Rum River One Water One Plan. You know, the only other thing we could do is, could we do it after the BEP quarterly meeting? At, I mean, I have a board meeting, but. Do it right there.
We could do it there.
I have a board meeting with them, but I can skip out on that.
Yeah, because this ain't gonna take us.
So, like a nine o'clock?
Yeah.
There.
At, at that place.
At that place.
Would that work?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, you can certainly have your meeting in any location you wish. You're not restricted to the county seat.
No, it shouldn't be real lengthy, so let's just do that.
I would, we're gonna make the assumption that that's gonna be okay with the city to use that facility afterwards.
Make sure it's okay.
Okay. Unless you otherwise want me to just assume that it's fine. We'll twist them arms, hopefully it'll be fine. That would really help.
It'll be fine. I can get the clearance.
So then, well, I'm sorry. So, we're gonna say a committee of the hall at approximately.
Nine-ish.
Nine? They try to have everything done. I don't know what the program is. So, approximately nine AM. The twenty-eighth at the ledge, excuse me, the Clearing, the Clearing in Sauk Rapids. And it's the same location as the BEP. Yep. Quarterly meeting. Okay? We'll just pull a table together and.
Yep. Perfect.
I'll make sure it's, we'll get clearance.
Okay.
I'm not worried.
They, they won't care.
No.
Okay, anything else?
That's all we have. If you could do a motion and set that, we appreciate that.
I moved. Second, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Call the question all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next. Monty, motion to go into closed session.
Chair, so, uh, you know, uh, I would just suggest that we, um, commit to the record, both motions that you see for closed sessions. Then maybe we can continue from one to the other, and, uh, I just wanna make sure of the record that for the first closed session, it's to discuss real property. We're required to disclose the property that will be discussed, and I'm gonna do that now. It's parcel thirteen dot zero-zero-three-zero-two and parcel thirteen dot zero-zero-seven-three-two, commonly known as the old Foley High School property. And I just ask Beth to commit that to the record, uh, because the old mean law requires us to disclose that property. And then, Mr. Chair, then the second motion would be to close under turn to client privilege, and, uh, we should disclose that the purpose is to discuss a legal dispute over human services clients residency with Carver County and the payment of placement costs. Kind of wrap all those together.
Yep.
And then we can just go from one to the other.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to go into closed session based on the county administrators reading up those two items.
Second. Got a motion and a second.